These should be single-family homes, not a four-story, mixed-use, shops on the bottom, three thousand dollar a month apartments on top, so that the people can get off a bright line and go into their apartment. This is what people are upset about, not also allowing them to have a single-family home here. This should all be a single-family home that's not currently already commercial or mixed-use. Or pre-two thousand four, maybe you could say.
Okay, so I just wanted to again, put that into context that there, because those were property rights that were part of this neighborhood prior to that code update. The code update put in more residential apartments, including the single-family homes.
It should be exclusively residential where there is residential. Not also duplex, or also apartments, or also mixed-use inside of this little neighborhood.
I will also point to the fact that there was a large-scale charrette in twenty, I want to say, two thousand and two, that talked about the mixed-use character of these neighborhood, of this neighborhood. Yeah, there was another update, and we did an update to the master plan. At that time, we heard that there was still a desire to have businesses along East Avenue. There's a handful of them today. So I just want to put that into context, that we did hear that from the community. We heard the concerns about scale, and that's why these other aspects of the zoning code are so important. Because you have to comply with all of those step-packs, all of those landscape requirements, all of the...
Last one, and I'll stop.
In order to get that.
On Bahama. These, one, two, three, four, five, single-family home lots, right now are not protected to be single-family homes when they're redeveloped. They could also be duplex, correct? This is SFD.
And I also want to point out that many of these houses are in fact duplexes. They're not all single-family homes.
This vacant, these vacant parcels is what I'm referring to.
If their, if their property size would allow for that, yes.
Correct. I beat it to death. I think you guys get where I'm coming from.
And I, you know, with that, with those specifics, we definitely need, I know that this was advertised, but we definitely need the input of those specific owners and the history of the McCarty Pharmacy and the other things that the people in the community wanted to keep at least some mixed-use or commercial on East Avenue. With regard to like another Mr. Richard McCarty's house that you talked about on Bahama Avenue, there was, some of those homes have been knocked down and, but there's also the opportunity that people, because we have to have this public input, because that's what the Form-Based Code asks for. There needs to be a way to, I know what you're saying, that people don't want to have large apartment buildings beside them. But we do have some apartment buildings in East Stewart. But people need to have some way to have affordable housing and to also build so that people can, can live in the area. I know what you're saying is that maybe, okay, it's going to be some monstrosity and it's going to be a leisure resort where somebody comes, and I don't think so. But I think the people who own the property need to have the opportunity to, they've, they've had input on the land use back in the charrette. They had input before, and definitely, as we discussed earlier this morning, we need to have their input, especially the people who own those specific pieces of land. We need to send out a letter to them if we're talking about that. Make sure that they come to whatever it is, whether it's a city council meeting or an LPA meeting. They need to have input as to if they're specially going to be downzoned. The only reason why things were done in the Form-Based Code was to add some specifics to make sure the sense of place was there, that the trees, that the sidewalks, that it maintained that character of East Stewart. And those were that if you're going to develop, you have to develop like that, and you have to come talk to the community. Isn't that correct, Jesse?
Yeah, and it's, it won't work at a commission meeting because they only, the public only has three minutes. So it needs to be a workshop, and I agree with you, Commissioner Clark. We need to go door-to-door in those neighborhoods. Make sure those people go down to Tenth Street and, just like we did for years before we adopted the Form-Based Code. And make sure people understand the changes being proposed, the impact it'll have on their properties, and then listen to their concerns. We just can't do this in a vacuum, this dramatically in this neighborhood.
Just for, for reference, for the, the city-initiated text amendments and zoning changes in two thousand twenty-three, we held four workshops, and that was in addition to the required community outreach, the community meetings like the LPA, the Board of County Commissioners. We also did door hangers, postcards, and of course, the required public notices. And of course, no code is perfect. And we want to make sure that the code always reflects the community's vision and, and keeps the city, you know, within its legal limits.
Mike, or Jody, or both, could you give us, maybe for the next zip or the next commission meeting, the history of the zoning through here?
Because we're, it seems like we're trapped in two thousand four newer.
Because people didn't want to change anything. People didn't want to change anything.
And so I'd like to see kind of a, a history of this entire district. And when we went from single-family homes.
Do me a favor, Chris, and click on the second icon on the top right, right there, up to the left, there you go, that one. And then scroll down, click on the two thousand twenty-four, and then if you can click on like nineteen ninety-four.
Right.
Or seventy-four. I think the seventy-four one actually has satellite imagery, because I did it there. So that, you can see what it looked like in seventy-four.
Will it give you the zoning on there?
Well, it won't give you the zoning, but you can, there's no vacant lots. So if you look where all those lots that you were just pointing out that were vacant, they would be vacant.
They had their houses passed. So Mr. Collins, Commissioner Collins, and everybody, a lot of people, older people have passed away. Some people have actually moved out of the area. There was a lot of code enforcement issues that went down some time ago. One of the largest and biggest code enforcement that went down was in twenty seventeen when the Taylor property, all of the homes from there were, were removed. But on, on the East Avenue section, there was the McCarty Pharmacy that had, the pharmacy downstairs and, and living upstairs. And along East Avenue, that was a tradition, also along Martin Luther King, that was a tradition. And a little bit on Central Avenue, where Mr. Willie had his bait shop, which I think Mr. Peterson now lives in that home. But there's a lot of things that, if you really want to know the history of those properties, and if, I don't know if any of the owners of the property on East Avenue have contacted you and tell you that they want to put their property into single-family. But those people, I, I know that Mr. Oden has come in here and, and he wants to build what he considers affordable housing, and that would be more than a single-family, would be a triplex, a duplex, or even a four or six unit, apartment unit. The Taylor property wants to come in with their property. And so you're talking about, you know, those two areas, you mentioned Bahama and East Avenue. There's also Tenth Street, but I think if you want to go that route, we need to hear from the owners of those property, and we need to listen again if the actual zone is going to change. I would say that the Form-Based Code cleaned up some things and put, classified some things, and it made mandatory landscaping, mandatory certain drainage, mandatory meet the community, all those things. That's what the Form-Based Code did. It did not downzone the, the, the East Stewart area.
It, it, it did not downzone, and the goal was not to upzone anyone either. Because absolutely it's a concern that if you add commercial to a neighborhood, that you can upside-down the, the economic input in that area, the, the liveliness of it as, as far as development goes. And in fact, I'll be happy to share some of our vision.
I understand what we're trying to do here. It feels like Creek District. We're trying to make this a more...
No, it's not, it's not like the Creek District.
No, it won't be.
I, I know that that may be something to go to, but if, if we can have three- and four-story mixed-use right there, we're trying to create more busy, energy, commercial...
I want to, I want to correct that statement, because I would be happy to send to you to the, the vision update. When two thousand four, I...
Mr. Brinkley, I'm sorry, stand here.
That two thousand four update that created a prohibition on the single-family homes.
And it may not be Form-Based Code, it may be two thousand four that we need to go back.
That, that made a big dramatic, that may have had an impact in the community, which is why we took a look at updating the code, or the city requested a look at that code. Because if you look, take a snapshot, the, the number of single-family homes or even small businesses had diminished over the years. And part of it is, of course, what Commissioner Clark was mentioning, but it also had to do with the code.
But we really need to protect our single-family home neighborhoods with everything going mixed-use, right?
That's why we're trying to designate it as a special area. I mean, we did, for the East Stewart area, we have it as a special historic area.
To truly protect your single-family homes in this area, you would remove, like, I'll give you one, instead of just complaining, I'll give you one actionable thing. In SFD, you should not be able to do a duplex without commission approval. That would be one example. If you're going to try to merge lots and do all that, the duplex part of SF, that D should not be by right. You should have to come in front of the commission to be able to make that be a duplex. That's one actionable thing.
So I just wanted to clarify, though, that's not necessarily an aspect of the Form-Based Code. So I don't, I don't want the, the form part.
It's not specific to Form-Based Code. I'm just saying, this code in East Stewart, though.
Density, that's a different conversation, and that has a lot more to do with, you know, what are the existing property rights and what's the best course of action if you're looking at a downzoning?
And I can't, I can't speak to the mindset of the commission in two thousand four and why they would have gone in that direction. But just logically, if I wanted to take this single-family home neighborhood and have it be developed into mixed-use, this would be exactly what I would do to it.
I, I can't speak to what was in the charrette in two thousand and two. And in the two thousand two charrette, there's a large document that reflects what the vision was and explains what that intention was. The intention was to take a look at the historic fabric of the neighborhood and allow for that again. And it didn't work out exactly as anticipated, because you can see that there are vacant lots still on some of those properties. So, but that was the intent. I don't think that there was an ill-intent. I think there was an intent to take a look at some of the historic properties and historic businesses and make sure that those were continued, had an opportunity to continue to be part of the community.
I don't, I don't see, I don't understand the value of... We're here, it's twenty twenty-four. We can talk to the current owners of these properties. We can talk to this community. There's no inherent value in the vision in two thousand two. I, I don't understand that. The town was completely different then. The city was completely different then. And we need to understand the challenges we face now and the needs that are present now and talk to the people who live in this community and understand what they want and need now, not in two thousand two.
Commissioner Reed.
Yeah, I remember, I, I did attend a couple of the Form-Based Code meetings for East Stewart, and a lot of those residents weren't happy with the changes. They voiced it tremendously, and, you know, and we talked about the city being different in two thousand two, it was. We had, downtown Stewart was commercial, and it's expanded throughout areas, throughout Colorado tremendously, and they want to potentially extend it down Canor, down MLK. So yes, it has changed quite a bit, and I think what Commissioner Collins is trying to say is he's trying to look out for the residents in East Stewart specifically, so they don't have that big development that they don't want of mixed-use. They want it to stay, you know, some sort of single-residential family development. With some commercial, yes, there is some commercial, but they don't want the entire neighborhood to be like Fraser Creek where it's totally mixed-use. I live in Fraser Creek, and it's very mixed-use. And even my neighborhood in particular, it, it has been predominantly commercial at one time, and then it's switched over to residential, and now it's probably half and half. And I think that's what he's trying to express, and that's what a lot of the residents feel as well. Especially when I door-knocked through East Stewart, and I have spoke with a lot of residents in East Stewart. I've even door-knocked some after being an elected official and tried to speak with them. It's just there's so much going on since August, so plain ketchup.
Commissioner, you.
Yes. I don't know that it was intentional, but we do have a situation where we have, if three and four plots are together, someone buys them and can make them and combine them under the current ruling to be multifamily, four-story apartments, whatever. So this is the opportunity to correct that, because I don't think the people in East Stewart want that either. They want a neighborhood. An absolute neighborhood where there's family, you can walk two blocks, go to a local store, go get your haircut. That's what they're looking for. They're not looking for making all of these apartments, which will not be affordable, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that would not benefit that community at all. So we need to be able to today, and this zip in progress, is to correct some of those things that were unintentional, but they exist. The reality is if you own four pieces of property in a row, you could then combine them and make some sort of multi, major multifamily housing. And I don't think that that would make anyone in East Stewart who owns single-family homes would like to see more. That is not the vision that they want. It's not the vision I want. Thank you.
Well, I know I said eleven fifteen, but how about we break five minutes early and take a fifteen-minute break?
Madam Clerk, you have the time?
He lives in front of me, he has a truck and he has lots of trucks parked right on Central Avenue.
Commissioner Collins, will you reserve your seat please?
Oh, he's gonna ring the bell. He's gonna ring the bell. No, I was asking Jody. I was calling you Rosa, but he's gonna ring the bell.
Jody Coogler, could you regain your seat please? We wait for Mr. Baggett?
No.
Oh my god.
You guys have a question for him, we can wait and ask him, but to wait for him and have no questions...
So, um, I know...
Oh, you know what, let me make one.
Okay.
Can I make one?
I'm calling back orders, special commission meeting of the Stewart City Commission, zip workshop number three. So, Collins, I think I interrupted you mid thought, do you want to...
I was just gonna add more to, you know, how to fix what I think is an issue would be to sequentially go through here and any of these parcels that are not on 10th or MLK that are inside of here and currently don't already have some sort of commercial or mixed use thing on there. For instance, off of Perfect. Like, could you zoom in a little bit, like on Tarpon? Where we already have single-family homes, should remain single-family homes? Would be my request. And you could allow, like, to not be in the way of somebody who owns like a property on East, for example. You could have that be a single-family home, but allow something more expansive under conditional use. Right, so... To hyper-focus on East, I'll come off of Tarpon, back to East. You know, right now, we have that zoned, that purple is mixed use. That is, that could be very intensive commercial, that could be a lot of different things. And it has been zoned commercial and basically been vacant through there since... Some of you who have been doing this longer than me probably have the answers, the seventies, I don't...
Probably...
Sixties? Since we desegregated, basically, it's been vacant. So allowing that to be single-family, or if you wanted to do mixed use with conditional use. Obviously, the housing authority is, that is what it is, but anything that's already a single-family home should stay single-family home. You know, both here and if we move over towards like Tarpon. And then if it's up against 10th or MLK where there is more of that office residential or potentially more intensive use, that would make more sense, but anything that's in this interior...
In the purple?
Yeah, any of those that, that very, very much should be a single-family home unless you come in for conditional use and want to do some sort of, uh... Because otherwise, you could have somebody buying up one, two, three, four of those parcels. Again, when Brightline comes, there's not been the development pressure on this area that there's about to be, ever. And if you own one of those parcels, you might be very excited about that because you're gonna be able to sell them. But if you live in that neighborhood and you're not gonna be able to benefit from that sale directly, the implications of what could be built there, we need to be looking at how to protect this neighborhood and not just make this as profitable for people as possible to develop, okay, so... You can with conditional use. Well, since the seventies or sixties, that's been vacant there. I mean, on East, right, so if you made that single-family home, for instance, and within conditional use, you could come in and we could be reviewing that if that makes sense, you know?
It's not a one-size-at-all, they have to be...
But you would zone it by right as single-family. You would protect that nature of it, so if somebody comes in by... I've been traditional since when? Again, it's been vacant since the sixty.
I definitely have to make sure that all those property owners are notified.
I'm sure those property owners want it to stay mixed use because it could be something very intensive that they could build and be very... Who it's important to is also all of those other people that will be affected by us allowing that on that parcel. So, again, my recommendations would be, if there's a single-family home on it, it should be yellow. Uh, if we go up towards... Tarpon, like that north part of Tarpon there, right, you've got all that green, that office, GRO. If that's got a single...
Did you, you still have the pointer, Chris?
Is that the school?
Yes, that would be helpful, right? So if I'm here, like, how many of those are single-family homes? That should with one swipe be yellow. And if you wanted to make that with conditional use, that you could go GRO. That you're not just denying anybody anything, but with conditional use, you can go GRO. And then if you move back towards the left, Chris... On East, right? Any of these would be single-family home by right and then under conditional use, if you wanted to make that BMU as well. Now, if we're up against MLK, if we're up against 10th Street, I think you've got a good case for this kind of stuff. But in the core, right, this should all be single-family home unless it already has something commercial or office on it, you know? But any of those, any of those should be zoned single-family home, including East, right? But with conditional use, you could have BMU. Would be my, that's a recommendation that I would want to see, and I think that protects by right this neighborhood continuing to be single-family. And instead of somebody coming in and buying up four of these vacant parcels and putting a three-story building as long as they can park it, you know? They would have to come in front of us to get that conditional use. Would be my recommendations. If you guys got that, my thoughts, Jody and Mike.
Do you know what's the board's place for parking? Do you want us to believe that East Stewart District's parking as is?
It would be whatever it is with those...
I would say the standards for parking that we have citywide should also apply to East Stewart as well.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're talking about...
So that, that I would have a comment, just to acknowledge again, East Stewart has for a long time had a different parking rate because of, in large part, the small size of the lots. So if you required for a single-family home, too many parking spaces, it would actually eat up a large amount of their frontage in the front of the building. So you would have neighborhoods where you'd have a proliferation of even more cars in the front. So that's just something to consider in how that impacts the existing small homes.
Is single-family two citywide? Is that what the parking is for, and it's one East Stewart?
And as far as, you know, transportation in East Stewart, and it is a large population with a one-car family household...
I mean, the only difference is we're talking about having people parking in the front yards, there's still people parking. It's the same thing, it's just... You're making it citywide.
I just wanted to add that for consideration.
It doesn't block out people from living or parking there, it's just there's not a driveway, maybe for that additional car.
But they wouldn't be permitted then, Jody, if they can't provide two point five?
If somebody comes in to build a single-family home on East Stewart, they have to have one space per car. If they came in to build anywhere else in Stewart, they have to have two spaces dedicated to the car.
Well, the frontage lot is shorter, some of them are forty, fifty feet. They're smaller lots and that's what, otherwise, they won't be able to build.
They won't.
Guaranteed, yeah.
What was the parking requirements historically? And I think a lot of these, Chris, like, they are smaller lots, right? So, I have a ten thousand square foot lot, so I have plenty of space to park, but some of these are three thousand, four thousand, they don't meet the minimum, so you're paying property taxes on something that you wouldn't be able to develop. And that's tough, well...
I don't know who's paying property taxes for what, as it relates to not being able to develop. They can develop the lot, right now, buildable, but...
They are buildable, but if we increase parking, I mean, some of these, you know, I don't know.
I don't think we need to change this parking in the East Stewart.
And that's what I was saying, historically, what has, what has it always been?
I think less, less...
It's always been one per unit?
Less relevant are the single-family homes, I would say.
You're talking, so that's where you can, okay, so that clarifies it then?
Yeah, I think more so with multifamily. If you guys can look at that.
And historically, if we're talking, if someone's coming in for a conditional use, the entire city code throughout the city of Stewart is written to where most applications outside of single-family come in front of the board regardless. And that's where the public gets upset because we grant exceptions, but if you don't grant any exceptions, you wouldn't even develop that parcel anyway. So, most projects in the city of Stewart come before the board regardless.
And if we have those updated parking requirements for multifamily, what your starting point for how dense it would be in the single-family home neighborhood would be less...
But I can, I can give you another good scenario, so if you look at, say, a three hundred apartment complex versus a twenty apartment complex, the twenty apartment complex, they're always gonna be full with parking. That one with three hundred apartments typically would not be, in my opinion, because there's more. Typically, the more you have, the less...
That goes under the engineer, whatever the IT traffic standard, they figure the complexes, the more likely that there's shared spaces available because more people are on it at different times and so those spaces can be available. The smaller it is, the more likely that everybody would be home.
Which is why you would want to have those more strict standards for...
For smaller development projects, maybe, if...
Duplexes, multifamily apartments, mixed use.
Correct, but depending on the size and the scale, you should really look into it, I guess. I mean, a twenty apartment or multifamily versus three hundreds.
Anything that's gonna be happening here on one to three parcels that are pieced together is going to be a smaller scale. So the parking really needs to make sense, otherwise, you're setting this neighborhood up for not being parkable.
Point one four, point one five acres, so three parcels is going to be less than half a...
Correct. So we need to make sure, so we need to make sure we can park.
Did you have any problem with...
Just to make, you know, the more parking you require, the more expensive it is.
Yep.
And so, people live in, it's gonna be more difficult for the people to live in this community to... Yep, yes.
Concrete costs money.
It just, you can't, you have to build a smaller home relative to the parking lot. And it's the wealthier people who are gonna be able to come in and take advantage of that and...
Dog whistling, gentrification, we just talked about taking single-family home out of that conversation, we're talking about multifamily.
All right, this is a workshop, right, so we can have public comment, because I'm gonna speak as, I think I'm an expert, you know? I mean, I don't crack bones and stuff, so I can't talk to that, but I'm gonna talk to residential development here. So, one of the things that the commission is saying here is like, you know what? I want to make everything residential in the community, but I'm gonna sit here and tell you how to do it. You have folks here who say they want to be at the table to have that discussion. Now, I'm gonna, you know what, go ahead, make it all single-family. It's point one zero four acres, right? I don't even think it's three thousand square foot. I'm gonna build a house on it. All right, I think everybody's saying they want to go to six thousand square foot residential homes, that's one. And then the second part, you want to have setback requirements. So what's gonna happen in this neighborhood is we're gonna have a big garage and a little door on the side, and then you will have, you know, how many cars, because I guess the afraid is that people are gonna be parking it like an apartment complex and have like ten cars there. I don't understand the concept behind that. However, when you now have these lots that are undevelopable because they're too small, don't worry about them assembling them to build apartments or duplexes, right? They now have to go out and buy the other property just so they could build something there. If the house get damaged by hurricane, now guess what? I gotta go figure out if my neighbor is also damaged, so I can buy his lot. So I can now build a host based on what you're basically putting on them without looking at this with input from professionals and the neighbors that are actually living there. That house, you try and build a single-family house right now, eighteen hundred square foot, ground up, okay? That can winst that hurricane. You're looking at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that's just a hard cost for that house. Now, let's go, we're gonna do all of these single families, that's gonna cost two hundred and eighty. Don't include land value, don't include all the money you have to go for spending, so you're gonna spend about three fifty on this lot that's in East Stewart. Guys, yes, that's affordable, because when I turn around and I want to sell it, even for like a one percent profit, I'm at minimum selling it for three sixty. God bless these guys affording that in that neighborhood. But thank you very much for making it all single-family residential without talking to the people that are living there. So you guys need to be thinking about this as you're looking at it. If you had a discussion around the table with professionals at the table doing that, all of these points can be brought up. I'm not saying you're not gonna hit what you want to try to do for that neighborhood, but at the same time, you're sitting here dictating what needs to happen without that input? That's idiotic, and I've seen it happen.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's easy to advocate for this to not be a single-family home neighborhood when you don't live there, and your goal is to develop it.
Mr. Giomi?
I think if we start interacting with the public, the meeting can easily get derailed. Again, any individual you want to speak with, you're free to call them and ask them to call you. I understand, I appreciate your concern. Any other comments regarding this? Mr. Mortel, do you feel you have... I don't have a sense of...
I mean, I have some comments, I'm gonna keep moving.
Again, we have to, you know, we have to see the language from Mr...
Right now, I'm bringing back the comments about Bayou and Tarpon and having that be a single-family by right and the GRO being conditional use. Parking will be that single-family home stays at one space for parking and multifamily will meet the requirements of the city commission. Well, anyway, multifamily is mixed use, but not single.
Yeah, so I, just single-family is what I said was by right and then anything else is by...
Do we know if, historically, East Stewart neighborhood has always had no minimum lot size, historically, Mike?
Well, so, if you go back to, if you go back to the seventies when there was... When was there no zoning at all, right? When downtown Stewart was built, there was no LPA, there was no code at all. So it all started out with no zoning. When East Stewart was initially developed or settled, it was no zoning. And so the lots were divvied up by a plat at the smaller sizes. You look off of like Alamanda and Flamingo and those streets, there's a lot of the lots that were platted at twenty-five feet. So, a lot of those parcels over there are now three recorded lot equal one parcel. And so, when you look at that back in the fifties or whenever it was platted, they were platted almost as a mobile home park and twenty-five foot lot.
Thank you, Helen.
But when you go back to it, over time, zoning has created R1 being a minimum of seventy-five feet and then there are one A being seventy-five feet and ten thousand square feet. And then you also get into not just the lot size of square footage, but historically, the city of Stewart has required a fifty-foot lot frontage in order to be a legal or minimum lot. And it was even bigger than that, seventy-five feet and sixty feet and ninety feet, a hundred feet. And it's taken width, so if you have a forty-foot wide lot, but it's two hundred feet deep, that would be an eight thousand square foot lot. But if it's not fifty feet of street frontage in most neighborhoods, it can't be built on because even though it's eight thousand square feet, it's not fifty feet wide, so it doesn't meet the minimum lot width of fifty feet, even though it's eight thousand square feet. And East Stewart, a lot of these lots that are point one, point one two, point one three and point one four, they come out to be around four thousand square feet or forty-five hundred square feet, which would be less than the five thousand square foot minimum lot width that we had predominantly as the cottage lots. And they also don't have the fifty-foot width because they're forty feet wide, so they don't meet the minimum lot width either.
Gotcha, and I don't, I don't think the consensus from the board is to go after minimum lot width or minimum lot size. I mean, it doesn't exist currently, I'm looking at...
currently. I'm looking at the development standards right now.
There should be minimum lot size.
Based off of what's existing?
Right.
Gotcha.
We should go out and, either Jess has this data or measure, there there should be, you don't wanna have just a.
So you don't take an acre and do two thousand or fifteen hundred square foot lots?
Again, we gotta think about what could happen.
If you look at the footnote that's in the chart, it says, there's no minimum lot size, and that all of those parcels of record were deemed parcel. But no more lot splits can happen. So if someone creates or subdivides any of these lots into a lesser parcel of record, so the question becomes, for example, if, if right now you own lots one and two, and it's one parcel of record, although there's still lots one and two, can you cut that in half? And have lot one have no minimum lot size and lot two have no minimum lot size? Or is it that it was a parcel of record with a parcel ID number? Are you looking at the plat? Are you looking at the parcel ID number? And that's not clear, but we'll be bringing that back to you guys to vote on as the issue. And so I'm gonna revise the notes, though, because at the first workshop, the board was seeking the six thousand minimum lot size for the citywide. And now I'm hearing that we're not gonna do that to take that out.
Not for East Stewart, but it should.
Correct, not for.
But there should be.
It's gonna be for the rest of the city?
Because East, East Stewart, um, never had that minimum lot size anyway. And it even says for newly-platted lots, it would be four thousand three hundred and sixty-five.
But to protect it going forward, you need to have some kind of.
It would be six thousand.
You need to have some kind of minimum. Based on what's over there. Not impose just out of pulling it out of the air. You should be over there measuring, looking at what it is.
Yeah.
And then to protect it going forward.
If they're gonna change anything, they have to still come to us and come to the neighborhood. If they're gonna make a large development, like try to do that.
Yes.
Yeah. So then we'll deal with it.
But if there's no minimum lot size, there's no restriction there for one of those projects. If you piece those four parcels together.
That's where you would have a maximum, then, if that's what you're thinking.
So I just pulled up randomly two lots on Coconut. They're not gonna meet that minimum lot size.
Coconut and Hibiscus in that area.
Yeah, those won't meet.
Yes, yes, that's where, that's the way that area is.
Coconut, Alamanda, Hibiscus.
But even at forty-three sixty-five, they probably don't meet it. I used to live.
Forty-three sixty-five.
I used to live over there.
Point one is forty-three sixty-five. So anything above, so point one-three-seven is six thousand. So point one-four meets it, point one-three-seven does.
And you would just grandfather that parcel in. It's non-conforming.
Okay, so, one, two, three.
It's not the majority of.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, thirteen, fourteen. I can count fourteen. We, we can do an inventory of it, but that's what I'm looking for the clarification on, because there's a, there's.
Got to see who's gonna be impacted.
Yeah, I agree. We should do an inventory.
And we should notify those people. Um, can I? This, this, this is really concerning with regard to East Stewart. And I know that we have, we wanna try to get this thing done and come back to, and bring something to the LPA. But I don't know, uh, if we'll get this part of East Stewart done today and have some notes from staff, or even if we don't have notes from staff. I really would like to set a time to have something at the Tenth Street Rec Center and give people an idea and let them see this again, what is, what you're trying to do, especially with the Martin Luther King, um, East Avenue and Tenth Street and the idea that, um, no duplexes within, um, lots that were.
With, uh, specific to east, you're talking about, um, BMU. So that's, that, that, what I perceive as a threat to that neighborhood with BMU on east.
If the people sell their property.
Is not that it's gonna be what it was historically, or it's a drugstore. You're talking about potentially a four-story if you can park it, um, mixed-use building. And I don't, I can't speak for everybody in every neighborhood, but the people I have talked to don't want that. And and I think if we're not paying attention to what we're making allowable there, what we're not, what we're zoning is what we're allowing. So what my recommendations were is by right, single-family home, but under conditional use.
They could do something else.
It could come in front of us and we could review it and make sure it's, you know, by right, you can't just, uh, buy up a bunch of parcels there and build a four-story thing. No. No way. And that's what we should want anyway, is.
Yeah, we wanna keep the sense of place for that area.
Community can come in and we can all talk about it, and either it makes sense or it doesn't, and.
So just a, a point of clarification, the by right, if if I can interject, is only, it's not four stories. That was actually something we updated with the.
Thirty-five.
Was it forty-five feet or thirty-five feet?
It's thirty, I think it's thirty-five feet, but it's three stories, three.
The most part for modern building, it's very difficult to even get three stories into thirty-five feet. Um, there was a previously, um, a provision that allowed for up to four stories. Again, that's what footnote number two is for. That's, um, significant, is that that house has to go to the commission and have that community input in order to get to that four stories, whereas previously it was.
But again, even three stories and thirty-five feet, sure, that that's coming in front of us, where that's a lot to happen.
I mean, you know, we have to thread a needle here between preserving the character, feel and character of a neighborhood and not denying opportunity for the community to grow. I mean, you point out, you point out that there's been, you wanna go back to twenty years ago, and but then you correctly pointed out, you said, well, this land has been empty for decades. So what was the value of that zoning if it didn't allow? Okay, but, so may, you know, the form-based code, I think, was looking for a means of providing additional opportunity for the neighborhood to grow and develop, because that twenty-year-old, that twenty-year-old code was not working. It had been vacant for years, just like having to buy, you know, the city did not wanna buy the property where Project Lift is, but it's that vacant thirty years. And so we saw an opportunity and took advantage of it. I think, looking back to the past, does not necessarily have a value. We can see that it was not succeeding. These are very difficult matters.
Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, there's, there's also a section, uh, eight point zero-two, point zero-zero. It specifically talks about hardship, existing non-conforming development in lots, and how you can still achieve development. If you meet certain criteria, you can come in front of the board. Um, so maybe that's a section to look at as well, just to make sure people are protected.
Means that you can't have created the.
Right.
Correct. Um, because I know there was also.
Mr. Mortel, can't have created the thing.
Well, I mean, if, if somebody, if somebody comes in and subdivides a lot, that is creating the hardship, and therefore you can't do it.
This is mainly for existing structures.
The Board of Adjustment has to, it's not, it's not a guaranteed right. When the Board of Adjustment was ruled, was hearing those, they have the right to vote no. So if you have a hardship and you want the city to waive the setback or to allow you to build on it, you, you have to pay for the application, you have to go to the public hearing, and if they vote no, you don't get the right. It's just a process to request an exception, essentially, which is no different than a conditional use, is a lesser intensive method. But that's, you know, we, we ran into it a lot when we went from the digital, from surveying, used to be done by the little scopes, and then went to digital GIS systems. And we found that a lot of the lots were forty-nine feet wide or ninety-nine feet wide, and there was a whole series in the nineties of Board of Adjustments, because these houses, when they were going to sell, the house was already built, and it was built nine feet from the lot line, not ten feet from the lot line, so they couldn't get title insurance. So the Board of Adjustment had to continually grant these exceptions to be as-built because of the way the survey was done in the past. But all that has kind of gone away now, because it's been caught up. Nowadays, it, the question is, when you talk about a hardship, if you guys wanted to grant a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet, if in fact, having less than six thousand square feet is considered a hardship and you're allowed to move forward on it, then there's no reason to grant the minimum lot size, because it doesn't make any difference.
They're gonna move forward.
So there's no reason to do it.
Yeah.
Um, so you just have to decide how you wanna handle it. We have a recommendation. Well, as it relates to the minimum lot size, I'm gonna bring back the, uh, resolution on December ninth, and we'll have some examples, um, of parcels that are, you know, less than what the, what the commission is as relates to the minimum lot.
Uh, Commissioner, as far as a workshop in Tenth Street, I mean, and this is the problem with commissioners going to public meetings. I mean, Jess.
Can be advertised for everybody.
I guess we're gonna have to advertise them then. The ones I went to and, Commissioner Clark, you were there and I was there, but.
We couldn't speak.
Right, it was Ms. Seymour.
Yeah.
Who conducted it, and that really was the, because we're there to listen anyway.
Yeah.
Um, and they have these opportunities to listen to us, so.
Well, it depends on what you're looking for.
Jesse, I'm not suggesting we impose on you. I'm just describing the reality.
When you guys are talking about having a public hearing in Tenth Street, I mean, this is a public hearing.
Yes.
So. No, but a workshop is different, a public workshop.
A workshop is, first of all, but it's gonna be genuine, too. I mean, if you're having a workshop and you're telling the people you're gonna do a charrette, and you want them to give you the development rights, then, or what they want developed, then you're pursuing it from that angle. If you're doing it as the city is doing a public notice of a project that's going forward, it's not as much of a workshop. So like, when we did the Project Lift, those public hearings weren't a workshop, those were a public notice, and we went and we said, this is what's happening on this site. And we did it to notify the community as to what was being pursued.
So it's almost like it should be a workshop, then, so we can engage and find out what they're looking for, and that's, that's my opinion. I'm all for it.
Do we need a motion to set something up in the next three weeks, Mike?
Well, I think we should wait to hear back the specific thing. Then we'll have an idea of how many properties are affected. And then, like you say, we can go door-to-door, you know.
Well, I mean, like, the Tenth Street Rec Center is not gonna apply to this, because in this discussion, obviously, we're not doing minimum lot size in East Stewart as to the six thousand square feet, or it would be every lot.
But if you can't build a duplex now, you can't.
Right.
If we're down zoning. Well.
I mean, it's the pleasure of the board. If you guys wanna have the hearing now, we can, we can schedule a public hearing and do it, or if you wanna wait after December ninth, when we come back with the resolutions, so you can see what we're actually doing.
I can talk to the people I know in East Stewart.
You think after December?
Get an idea of how they wanna proceed.
Okay.
What they feel would be the most.
And we can bring it up, I guess, at the next commission meeting, then? Okay, that would make more sense, then. And if I, I feel as if we're gonna have something, I feel it should be more in the afternoon, maybe like.
Or even.
After five, after five.
Yeah, I would even potentially start it at four, so at least you can get started.
Yeah, before it starts.
Where, you know, we spend an hour with comments before we get into, to things, so I think that'll still allow. And and also, what I did hear is, um, in East Stewart, a lot of times, Thursdays typically work better, by the way.
People have choir practice and Bible studies.
Yeah, I've always heard Thursday, I think, just because there's already a NAACP meeting on Thursdays.
Seymour's nodding in agreement.
We've used, they've used that committee today also at the.
Correct, and and I think that would be maybe more appropriate than just for when it does come back up at this board meeting.
Yeah, Jessica, Jessica Thorpe knows the best time.
At the charrette, Mike, we don't really have mission comment, we don't get.
Well, if we're running it like this.
At the charrette, it was, it was a moderator, and it was.
Yeah.
A presentation.
Right.
And then after the presentation, you broke into groups within the community. And then after the tables bed for a couple hours, then they got back up, and each table presented to the group what the table had come up with, and then the group kinda gave feedback to the table comment. Commissioner Reed?
And and to further elaborate.
Just a meeting.
On, on the East Stewart neighborhood in general, you have two sides at play. You have the investors and the developers, and you have the people that actually live in that neighborhood, and I'm sure most of fellow board members are probably aware, and that's where there's this fine balance of what they want. And then you have people that are buying up property for redevelopment purposes for density, to get a return on their investment, instead of it being single-family where you live there, instead of it being an investment. So that's, that's mainly what happened. There's like five key players in the East Stewart neighborhood to where they have acquired property or slowly acquired property. If you look on Property Appraiser, you can see where historically that's what's happened.
You also need to note, there, it's not mutually exclusive.
Right.
Many of those families that own the land in East Stewart have owned it for multiple generations.
Yes.
And actually do live there. So it's not just where it was a developer speculating on land to buy to develop. It's actually people that live in the neighborhood.
No, I agree, I agree with you, Mike.
I've never spoken to a developer who wants to go to East Stewart.
A lot of people who, who live, who live there in, in the neighborhood.
Depends on who you ask.
But again, but again, the, the pressure to develop East Stewart hasn't been there like it's about to be. Once Brightline's coming in, there's not as much left to redevelop. It's, we gotta really make sure we're looking at this carefully and the impact it's gonna have on the people that live there. Not just the bottom line of the people who would wanna develop it, and even though there are a handful of families that own some of these parcels, what happens when dad dies, or, and now Brightline, and now all of a sudden that's getting sold, and, you know, everybody cashed out, but this is the things we need to consider.
Commissioner, Commissioner Clark? Yeah, so.
Someone who wanted a developer in East.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know.
Besides the Taylor property?
Taylor property, Mr. Oden, the other people, the, the McCarty family. Um, but anyhow, this is a double-edged sword. So, um, if we make certain rules, we wanna keep the characteristics, we wanna do some, some things that will allow for vitality and for redevelopment. But at the same time, uh, if we do certain things that the owners of the property find it too hard to develop, they're gonna end up with, hey, I can't do anything with this thing, I'm just gonna have to sell it to the bigger guy. And then you end up with nothing. That's why it's important to have the people who own the property, and they'll say, and the main thing is that if we had something like a community development corporation, where they had a loan pool or a way to do economic development, those people would be able to get a reasonable loan. I don't know the market that we are on, what happens with the stock market, we don't know. But they would be able to get a reasonable loan in order to actually redevelop some of that property. But it's not happening, because, and these families have owned the property a long time. They've been holding on to it, and some of them are getting very old, and it might go off and be sold to somebody, because we can't tie their hands too much, where if they do wanna, we have, let's just, let's just, Ms., Ms., um, Ms. Howard Hamilton has, has her, Ms. Rosita, the Mr. Bell. They all have, um, Mr., the, the guy on, um, he, he passed away now, um, I can't think of his name right now, but they were on Martin Luther King. They all have, there's a lot of small apartment buildings, and they work well. They're, they're not even, well, some of them are two stories. They've worked well in the neighborhood. Some people may wanna still do some of those, or some people even wanna do even smaller homes on some of these small lots. Of course, we still have the accessory dwelling unit that's allowed on the single-family lot if they can meet all the requirements. But we really have to be very careful that we don't tie people's hands, so that they're like, I can't do anything with this property, I'm just gonna sell it. And of course, when somebody else comes to us and says, well, I need to get all these into one title unity so that I can get something done with it, then we have the. so that I can get something done with it, then we have the issue of what do we do with this PUD or do we allow it or do whatever? So we just really, I think we at least need to get a chance to hear from the actual owners of this property. And I will be talking to some of them personally. And, um, I think that we, if we're gonna be, um, changing the zoning and, uh, changing the, the, the feel of the neighborhood, um, because like I said, this was a lot of mixed use. And I know that you have said, don't go back to the past, but the reason why East Stewart was like that because there were over eighty businesses in East Stewart before nineteen sixty-five, before nineteen seventy-five. And after integration, which actively took hold after nineteen seventy-five, those businesses went out of business. A little mom and pop business went out of business and now we don't even, we hardly have anything along Martin Luther King. But there was a time when Stewart had two main street. There was an East Stewart Main Street and there was a downtown Main Street. We did that for about four or five years, maybe six years with the East Stewart Main Street when Joan Jefferson was on the commission and Mr. James Christie was on the commission. And we didn't, it, somehow the, the people who owned the land, especially on East Avenue and Martin Luther King, uh, maybe they needed help with development ideas, but it wasn't happening and that main street went by the wayside. But there is a history of a lot of mixed use of both little commercial and a little residential, all beside each other. Little shops beside the homes. The Taylor property had a shop. Now there's a shop on, um, on Martin Luther King where I think it's Ms. Gibson's property on, um, on East Avenue. Um, and that shop has like two little stores inside of it. And it's just, um, we just really need to talk to the neighborhood. If, and make sure that the view that we have for the community is the same view that they have and that, uh, everybody's gonna try to work to keep the, the fabric of the neighborhood. We have it as an af historic African-American district, hopefully that in itself. And we have a board, a historic board that is there to try to collect the data for the East Stewart area and to make sure that we try to keep that what it is as a part of the fabric of our community. And, um, that's where we are.
Mayor?
Commissioner Gob.
Then I think we're all in agreement and we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, but maybe a little more density around there could support the businesses and create a, help to revitalize the commercial aspects of that traditionally commercial neighborhood.
Okay, next.
Are we done?
This section was my main concern in terms of chapter three. So unless there were more concerns, I'm, I'm wrapped up for what.
And we're gonna clarify the parking and the lot sizes. Okay.
And we're gonna verify a date?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, thanks. So the density, you mentioned seventeen units per acre, Mike. On, everything is okay. Nothing is changing with that.
Don't look at me, I'm not making that.
No, that's fine.
The seventeen happened.
As of this moment.
Well, I think this is something to consider as well. When did seventeen happen?
Seventeen happened in like two thousand and seven, I think. And what happened was you had the.
Because that was an issue I had before we were doing.
The, the, the two thousand and one charrette and the urban overlay zones were adopted and then caused some, uh, changes around Stewart. But East Stewart wasn't keeping up with it or didn't have any of the same, um, interest that the rest of the community had. So with the East Stewart Main Street and the concerned citizens of East Stewart was a group that had come forward and as a way to, because again, going back to these smaller lots, some of the people were saying, well, look, without the seventeen units an acre, we can't come and do this by right because if you start doing a duplex or you start doing this other stuff, you're bumping right up against the fifteen units and it's too expensive for someone in East Stewart to come for a traditional PUD, which is why it was all done by conditional use with a one hearing to save money on the hearing. And then it was seventeen units was kind of like a compromise to say, look, it'll give a little more by right than the rest of the community so that people can go forward on projects that would otherwise bump up against that. It didn't result in any, I'm not aware of a single project.
Oh, with Form B, we have seventeen then up to thirty by conditional use.
Seventeen was by right.
Right.
So instead, the rest of the city is fifteen or ten by right. So it was fifteen until the city commission moved it up to seventeen.
So why would we not restore fif, have fifteen and, uh, whatever we're about to have compromise that we come to with our next density?
You haven't changed fifteen from anywhere. So we haven't changed any by right.
But we were talking about, uh, going from thirty to peeling that back.
Okay, so that's not the seventeen issue. That's, that's for East Stewart. That's thirty to seventeen.
That's, but what I'm saying is going from in East Stewart, just like we're doing in the sort of urban area as well, doing fifteen and then whatever that number is as the, as the density. Why would we have a different density?
Well, so allow a window for some affordable housing.
Because again, if we're trying to have a single-family home neighborhood, same kind of idea, we're making this area overly dense.
Well, a single family, you're not gonna run into a dense.
I know, but if, if in some of these projects, you can now have, you know, if we don't, if we don't update the density here for by right and then up to in the conditional use like we're doing in the rest of the city, we're creating an overly dense East Stewart relative to the rest of the city because we are updating it the rest of the city. So I would say whatever we do with the urban or otherwise, let's say it's fifteen and twenty, that's gonna be our new density allowance.
I only have, my only note was that it's fifteen to thirty and the commission's gonna give direction on what, because at the first workshop, there was some discussion of twenty, twenty-five. It didn't, it was never really finalized. So.
I would say whatever our consensus is for the city at large, we should deploy the same thing in East Stewart so it doesn't become overly dense relative to the rest of the city. It, it wouldn't make sense.
But they can still come in with a PUD and ask for more.
Right, or a conditional use.
Right.
But that number should reflect what we decide on the rest of the city.
I'm, well, I, again, that doesn't mean it hasn't. I'm just not aware of it because they would have had a, they could have come in and got a permit with, um, administratively and I wouldn't have ever seen it because it was straight zoning, so I don't have any idea.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I hate to beat this to death, but from like a development standpoint, if I'm a developer and I'm looking at the rest of the city, right, and I, I get fifteen and then let's say it's up to twenty-five or twenty, but in East Stewart, I can get seventeen or thirty. I just double, triple, you know, I'm getting way more out of this area. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna really put develop, uh, higher density.
There's not that much property. There's not that much property. It's just a Taylor property that has the opportunity, uh, for larger.
Commissioner Collins is saying is that if we're gonna take away the up to thirty units per acre in the rest of the city, then if you leave it up to thirty units per acre in East Stewart, you're gonna be pushing people toward East Stewart for development.
Redevelop.
For redevelopment.
So it should reflect whatever we do everywhere.
So we call that a density bonus in the code. So by right, if it's commercial, you can go up to ten units an acre, but you can come before the board on a PUD or commercial, a conditional use for up to thirty. Multi-family by right, you can go to fifteen units per acre, but you can come before the board for up to thirty units. East Stewart overlay zone, it's by right seventeen, but you can come up before the board to go up to thirty to exceed the seventeen with condition approval or commission approval. So in the first workshop, there was some comments about reducing thirty units an acre to a lower number. The board didn't pick the number, so we'll be looking for the board to give us direction on that. You can do it now or we could do it on December ninth.
So that would be my ask is that we deploy those same numbers towards East Stewart fifteen and then whatever that number is, twenty, you know, whatever we come up with.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't even know if that you can do this, but for those, uh, properties in East Stewart that fall below the minimum, is there a way to have like a dedicated?
Minimum size?
Yeah, for that particular group because they fall under the minimum. I don't know if it's possible.
Have a dedicated to what?
Grandfather, grandfathering.
Is that considered grandfathering? Yeah, no.
They are, they have their own land use and zoning. So that's what we've done. The East Stewart overlay zone specifically identified that and said, that's what this is.
They're buildable.
But what we're describing now is just what we're gonna allow for projects that would be coming forward is, is fifteen units per acre by right the density or is it seventeen? Seventeen is what we allowed with the base code and then in oh-four.
Sorry?
Oh-four, we did that initially seventeen.
No, I think it might have been oh-seven, the seventeen happened.
And then we codified it in Form B again, but like locked it in again, so. Having it, uh, match whatever's in the urban area, what we're talking about, so fifteen and then whatever number we come up with up to.
Again, like I said, let's meet with the people there. And I, I know I, this, this was done special because trying to maintain some affordable, the ability for people to build and be able to, to, to build at a scale where they, they can build, uh, affordable units so that people can rent for a lower price. That was the whole point, I think, of keeping, of making East Stewart, um, at the seventeen.
Commissioner, do you have one example where the density bonuses that we've allowed has resulted in that outcome?
I don't know. I just know that that was what was done for East Stewart.
It may be the goal, but all it does is create more density that ultimately these apartments still cost two, twenty-five hundred and three grand a month. It does not create affordable housing to have more density. It just creates more density and more lucrative investment options. That's it.
If we don't.
Show me the outcome.
A little bit economy of scale.
Not the goal. The dream is one, the reality of it in Stewart is different.
We, we had a proposal. And we rejected it.
Yeah, the mills.
Affordable housing came with, but everything we're doing now.
And then we won't be, yeah, that goal is not gonna be attainable.
Mayor Rich. I, I just wanted to add, um, in twenty seventeen, in East Stewart, GRO BMU was fifteen and thirty in twenty seventeen and it was seventeen in SFD in East Stewart.
It's been seventeen since two thousand and seven.
Correct. And then in, in the Form B is when I'm assuming they went to the seventeen thirty.
It was, so yes, East Stewart didn't allow.
Because I'm looking at the resolution in twenty seventeen.
East Stewart didn't allow up to thirty. It was just seventeen. The density bonus didn't come in until the Form B was adopted.
See, I'm looking at an ordinance from twenty seventeen that.
Maybe that's when it was adopted.
Yeah.
But it was, right. But it doesn't, none of that.
Correct, and I believe that's what the Form B is. I know.
When that happened or not. I mean, it was, we know that it's seventeen thirty.
Just so historically, it helps you.
Because the other thing is like, I know like the Taylor property actually had, you know, twenty-five or thirty units on it. And then the Housing Authority was above fifteen units per acre as well when it built that project.
And the Housing Authority is just two stories.
Right.
And Taylor property could come in at three stories.
That's what I think their proposal was at one point three.
Can, um.
There's a public comment as well from Paul. Mayor Rich.
Mr. Skyers.
Hi, I'm Paul Skyers. I represent the Taylor property. Um, my street address is nine fifty South Counter Highway. The Taylor property is on Tenth Street, East Tenth Street. We have a problem in the affordable housing arena where the insurance companies are saying the replacement value for an abode equates to about a hundred and fifty-three dollars a square foot. So if, 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 if a structure unfortunately gets hit by a hurricane, the insurance companies will pay about a hundred and fifty-three dollars to replace it per square foot. But the actual construction costs for that structure is a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred dollars a square foot. If a nurse who works at the hospital wants to rent a space in a unit that somehow gets built at the hundred and fifty-three dollar level, that nurse is paying somewhere around, for a thousand square foot house, uh, rental unit, they're paying somewhere around eleven hundred to fourteen hundred dollars market rate, probably higher. If, if a kid graduates from high school, wants to get an, you know, an entry-level job, parents want them out of the house, that kid's paying twelve hundred dollars a square foot to fifteen hundred dollars a square foot. If in fact, we need that affordable class of workers in our community because they're the ones that consume the most. They buy televisions, they buy cars, they, they, they buy. It's not like an old affluent person who's, who's over here who's purchased everything they want in their lives already and know they're on fixed income where they don't, they don't spend to, to generate that disposable multiplier in your economy. If we want to encourage firemen, policemen, um, emergency people, people who, who take the bedpans out of mom's unit over at the hospital, cleans the bedpans, x-ray technicians, we're going to have to be deliberate and intentional about the way we look at the housing challenge. We can't just bury our head in the sand and assume somehow that two hundred dollar square foot unit's gonna get built for a hundred. So compacting the density, you know, pushing down the density drives up the unit cost of those, yes, it does. I'm, I'm in the industry. And, and what happens is you end up having to pass the cost on to the consumer, the renter, the, the person who lives in that space. What, what you want to do is create that happy balance where you get those people. You get the, the police officers who live in your community as opposed to saying, you know, something, I can make more money down in Jupiter. So I'm gonna move out and take all this experience and training that you've given me here in Stewart and I'm gonna take my skills to Jupiter. You don't want that. You, you want the high school kid who is the assistant to the plumber.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can, can you just finish?
Actually, it's a small meeting.
Yeah.
Fifteen seconds and I'm out. You, you want that affordable class of, of individuals in your community or your economy is eventually going to die.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments with commissioners? I, I was just gonna say, Mike, so you guys will be able to, uh, be moving forward with this and in the meantime, we'll.
We are not, so staff is not writing any code until we get the direction from board on December ninth.
But you're putting together the recommendations based on what we talked about.
And I could go over it right now if you want.
If it could save us time in December, yeah.
Chapter two, density bonus is up to thirty units an acre. Board will be applying a lower number of density amount. Commission recommended the bonus be reduced to twenty.
Yeah.
Um, there was discussion regarding seventeen in East Stewart, but no consensus. Two point oh-three, point oh-six, intensity of development, lot area.
Can I give, can I give context to that? So where it's.
Well, these are just notes, right?
Yeah, where it's ten and, ten and.
Commercial is ten, mixed use is fifteen.
So ten and thirty, you would have more like ten and fifteen and then where you have fifteen and thirty, it would be fifteen and twenty.
So, but I, I, so that's what you're seeing now is just to increase it by five above the, okay.
When we, when we had discussed that, those, those were my thoughts on that comment, on that point that you're bringing up.
Capping, where it's commercial development, right now, we can do up to ten units per acre and you can go up to thirty with the board approval. Commissioner Collins is recommending that it be allowed to go up to fifteen and not past fifteen. And then when it's mixed use, where it starts at fifteen, it'd be allowed, the density bonus be allowed to go up to twenty.
Correct.
But not up to thirty. So the density bonus being capped at five is what I noticed. I don't, I don't know that I have consensus on any of it, but that's why I'm gonna bring it back for the vote. Not next week, it's December ninth when it's coming back. The agenda for next week's already out, right?
If we could give you some consensus tonight, okay? Fight the process.
I think this is a workshop. Let's just give it to staff and I, I'm gonna know what I'm having to change.
No matter what, I'm gonna bring the resolution back. I can keep going through it. Two point oh-three, point oh-six, intensity of development, lot area and floor area ratio table. Reference to table four is the code prior to reference. And this is a comment regarding adjusting the code. Um, there'll be a relationship between floor area ratio and density. No density bonus for mixed use. Table four addresses floor area ratio, need to div, need to revise to clarify. Also, uh, two point oh-four, point oh-two, minimum width and lot areas, unless varied. Uh, need to remove some language in that as well. Also addressing minimum lot size. Um, it mentions no residential lot less than fifty feet in width, measured at the average lot width. No platted lot shall contain less than four thousand three hundred and fifty-six square feet. Commission's going to be addressing that to minimum lot size of six thousand. Two point oh four, point oh two B, if two or more adjoining lots with continuous frontage are in a single ownership at any time, such lots individually um, shall remain them, so they're not, intended not to be subdivided, that needs to be not lots, but parcel because it's the definition of lot or plat. Two point oh four, point oh three, impervious surface currently allows up to sixty-five percent, board comment was fifty percent. Supplemental building setback requirements, suggestion by board was to make setbacks ten feet instead of five feet. Next one is, uh, lots of record, uh, should be parcel of record, cottage lot language needs to be reconciled with minimum lot size. When adopting, it was five thousand feet, but there's also minimum lot now of four thousand three fifty-six, either remove it or update it. Uh, two point oh six, point oh three, assisted living facilities and detox facilities, should we add the county language and have a specific number um, and a specific size, and define it as commercial activity. Uh, next one is two point oh six, point two two, EV charging needs to be brought up to the state statute because it's been amended. Next one, ADUs must be on the same electric and, uh, meter. Uh, ADU not be, not allowed to be occupied unless the owner of property resides on the property. Duplexes and non-conforming use, mission is going to provide regarding, direction regarding the fifty percent rule. There's a discussion about when those duplexes in that neighborhood, when people come in to get permits, they're allowed to get a permit for up to fifty percent of the value, and um, as a result, they keep getting permits of up to fifty percent of the value of what it is this year and next year, so there's some language that needs to be changed there. Cannot expand the use, cannot do more than fifty percent of the value at the time it became non-conforming. Question mark on how you determine. Multifamily FAR, every square foot of multifamily is equal to a square foot of commercial for determining floor area ratio. Self-storage should only be an industrial, multifamily will not have shared parking with commercial, half units shall be removed. Mixed use PUD does not get density bonus based on the mixed use shared. Chapter three, uh, single family zoning duplex shall not be allowed by right, be required to be approved by the commission. Minimum lot size and width. Section three oh two oh four, figure nine, East Stewart, minimum lot size, no minimum lot area, no minimum lot width, but no one describes forty-three fifty-five. Uh, board, uh, tribe wanting a minimum at least, uh, lot size for East Stewart with an inventory.
Fine.
We have to bring it back.
Email as well.
Property, property that is GRO on Tarpon should be single and right. Uh, and by right, and GRO requires conditional use, bio should be single family and not GRO or GRO by right. Should be conditional use, duplex must be adopted by conditional use. Standards that we have citywide should also apply to East Stewart as well.
You, you include East in that, okay?
Yep. Figure ESN forty-two, minimum provided parking schedule. Um, that's, you guys want the single family homes to be the same, but the other, uh, multifamily to meet the ci- citywide uh, requirements. BMU, SFD and GRO should be single family by right, but a lot of the other uses by conditional use. East Street BMU, it is not going to be a drugstore, it is going to be a large building. Canter goes a long way.
Right off of East Ocean, all duplex.
Uh, right, it's, um, the Fisherman's Village or whatever it's called, um, central, it's Park.
Parkway.
If you're heading to the ocean, it's on your right.
Or stable clothes.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, Finney, Finney and Roblo are, Parkway.
Yeah, Roblo, yeah.
Okay.
Um, Roblo, Roblo.
What would be?
Roblo, sorry.
I cannot believe.
Yeah, those are.
But it's a very popular neighborhood, I know a lot of.
Fisherman's Village.
My age.
Well, those are built.
I don't know, but I'm saying, what would be the park?
So they would be.
Two point five.
They would be two point five and two point five, so each duplex would need five parks.
Five parks.
Right now it's four.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, it's not gonna work, it's not gonna work. We don't have the space.
I mean, it's all.
We're just gonna be putting up concrete jungle.
It's all the single.
Listen, I'm, I'm just reading back the notes, you guys are all. And then, um, I made some notes on chapter four that you guys haven't talked about, but I did it for my own clarification.
I mean, this, it's a half of a space more than currently, as you're acting like it's completely unheard of. Yeah, it's, it's a half space. It is, that's what we changed, the, it's not some revolutionary thing.
Chapter six, uh, new construction, new parking will only apply to expanded uses and new construction. Six oh three, six oh one oh three, multifamily parking should be increased by point five for each criteria, for example, two bedroom is two point five spaces per unit, one bedroom is two spaces per unit. Staff recommends the IT Institute of Transportation Engineers. Residential combined with non-residential shall have full calculation for commercial and full calculation for residential. Uh, six point oh four, point oh two, sixty percent should be shade trees instead of fifty percent. Example of code language can be found in the Creek District, six point oh six, green or LED certified properties needs to be updated or removed. Six point six, point one one is relationship to signs, height of signs, specifically on East Justin Boulevard, fifteen feet versus ten feet. Rides away, parking in right of way, residents that have constructed parking in the right of way shall be allowed to maintain a license, gonna be open to the public. Um, new ones has comments on it, and then, uh, section eight point oh three, point oh one, non-conforming uses and lots need to address the lot of record versus parcel of record, platted lots have been right, lots of records in the twenties, but they're not legal parcels under the current zone. That's the notes I have.
Um, can I? Okay. Oh, go on, okay.
I just wanted to mention the whole golf cart motorcycle parking as well, and when all this stuff comes back and we have like. Shared parking for the golf cart motorcycle, so it's not separated, um.
That's, that, that's actually not, we don't, we're not writing code for that, we just have to make signs.
Okay, and then, um, I guess when this does come back to the board, if we can have like historically what it was and see where the provisions are, because I was on the public side when I would research ordinances, and it was very difficult trying to follow it. I look at Martin County Land Development Code versus the City of Stewart, historically, the county showed all the provisions and the links worked, and it just, it made it so much easier.
I don't know what you mean.
Um, when you look through Land Development Code, when you look at the bottom of it, it'll sh- correct.
It, it's still there, ours has it.
Correct, but they all don't work, by the way, um.
Then you, you would just do the research and go through our, our ordinance, yes.
What, you're saying you want, so when I bring it back, there's not gonna be any link? Because I'm not, that's when it goes, when it gets codified by Muni Code is when they put those in. So we're just gonna be bringing back the code as you guys are requesting it right now, you guys are making the change, so there isn't, doesn't matter to staff what it was before, it's what you wanted.
Well, I think for the public to see where the changes have been made would help, gotcha, okay.
Okay, it'll be, so we'll show the actual language, and then below it, like in the draft, we'll actually have it stricken through with red line, and then underlined with red will be the new language proposed to replace the old language.
But not the history of what it was ten years ago, we won't have that, I have to do my own due diligence, I guess, and.
I don't know that, well, we can do it, it'll take us a year.
Just because it's nice to see, I, I don't know how you feel, Rich, but I know when I look at some of these past ordinances, it's nice to see where things were line-striked through.
We can, we can get that, but I can promise you we can't do it by January.
Correct, I mean, that's, trust me, I know how it was when I was campaigning, trying to find this stuff, it was almost next to impossible to find it, and now that I'm a board member, um, it should be nice to be able to see this stuff historically.
Well, I, I know that the urban overlay zones were adopted in nineteen eighty-seven originally by Duani, and then the Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council came in and did the charrettes in two thousand and one, and ultimately adopted the extensive overlay of the code in two thousand and two. So eighty-seven and two thousand and two were substantial code changes related to zoning and land use. And then you have the two, uh, East Stewart and the Creek District that were adopted in twenty-three, and then you just have minor zoning changes along the way as it relates to, you know, things here and there, like fences and front yards and things like that that are random, but overall, the substantial change was really in two thousand and one and it, in eighty-seven, and then these two, uh, Form Based codes in twenty-three. If there's anything like particular, I'd be happy to bring the research back, but I don't know, um, what we're looking for, what the significance of, because we know what it is currently.
Just a number of parking spaces and additional spaces that, um, Commissioner, uh, Collins had made a little comment that, um, people will park on the grass anyway, or something like that.
I live over by Finney and Roblo, and that's what they do over there.
Yeah, and so we had the, we had the no parking on the grass ordinance, but that didn't go anywhere, right, Mr. Mort?
We still have that code.
Okay, but they, it's not, it's, let's put it, it's not in.
I mean, we don't.
It's not, um, enforced.
Your yard for an hour on the grass.
It's not enforced.
No one's gonna come code-enforce them for that, but when people are ran, regularly parking their car in the middle of the, of the yard, if it's not on a hardened surface, we code-enforce it regularly.
And same thing with boats or anything along the side of the house, those are code-enforced, but if we have all, yeah, if we have, if people I guess if they're gonna build a new one, and if, if it's adopted, then they'd have to meet the parking requirements, but, um, two point five. Yeah, that's when you have a large units and it will actually, um, you know, come out.
Now we have to look at, now we have to look.
Well, I if you go back and look at almost every approved development from, say, two thousand and three forward, since the overlay zones were adopted, where the Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council wrote it intentionally to come up short so that it would require conditional approval or whatever type of use you wanna call it nowadays, because it changed. It was an urban code exception originally, and then it changed to conditional use. But the purpose for that was so that the board would grant these exceptions, but also bring the, the character of the community into it and ask the developer to add things to make it consistent with the city. But I mention that because whatever the parking requirements were that were adopted in two thousand and one, I would say ninety-nine percent of the projects that were approved by the board required a deviation from parking. So whether it's two point five or whether it's two point oh per space, when you start looking at the projects, none of them actually met the two point oh. So they're not gonna meet the two point five either, they're gonna be asking for exceptions, it's just gonna be what the minimum standards are for the commission to approve. Or for administrative approval.
Yes, thank you, okay, just bring you back on the detox. Okay? There was language in there, but what I missed, maybe it's there, was the distance between the dis- themselves and the one between.
Yeah, that's there.
Yes, that's.
And the ones between private neighborhoods, between neighborhoods, how close can?
Between neighborhoods?
Well, neighbor, like, um, if it's on federal highway and it's nearest neighborhood is.
A hundred feet.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Well, US one is a hundred feet from the neighborhoods behind it.
Okay, so I, if, I understand that Martin County has a back distance?
Not from the neighborhood.
Thousand feet.
They have, they have from the other facility.
From another facility, and that we have in there.
That's, that's in the.
Not close to a neighborhood.
We didn't.
It's gonna be a butt in the land use, it's gonna be a butt in another land use.
The commercial land use is gonna, right, that's the problem, US one a butt's neighbor.
Yeah.
We don't have a buffer area, but the building, um, frontage would not be, you know, would always be that it would not be closest to the neighborhood.
And that, 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 hey, it's added here because it came up at the workshop, really went off.
Yeah, Mike, uh, Chris, do you mind putting up that East Stewart map one more time? I just wanted to add a little more clarification with regard to the single family home. So can you zoom in on Central? Yeah, so, yeah, besides, if, if we're coming down Central, right, besides these, uh, parcels right here that are on MLK, uh, something that I, I didn't mention that I think we should include with regard to single family home zoning is, it's gonna be, uh, down here on Central. All right, these are all single family homes, and then as well, um. Central.
Central, that's multi, the, the people who own those property were here this morning.
So you'll have, you'll have the, um, left side over here where it is, but over here, these are gonna be homes. Here.
Albert Brinkley's house.
They're already.
Central.
Central.
They're, they're already single family.
I know, but they're, they're currently zoned as business mixed use, that's what I'm saying, so the same thing that we were talking about before where by right you'd be single family, but, uh, with conditional use, you could be looking at doing something like that.
Because traditionally, there was a bait shop there and some other thing.
But currently, it's, it's all, those are all homes, and then as well.
Let's look to the neighborhood, and that's where Mr.
That's where Albert's at, yeah, and then.
That was Albert.
And then below that, we have, um, if you look at Lake Street kind of as the line of demarcation, these as well, I believe, are homes, and then these are single family homes. We have this as GRO, but again, these should be single family home with GRO as a conditional use. Up here, yeah, up there.
That's my church.
And then right here, these, I believe, are home. I could be wrong, but I believe so, and then down here. So so just, you know, for, for clarification, these would be single family.
Central.
These would be, these would be single family, and then over here would be single family, south of the church. And then down here, um, I think.
Those are single family now.
Yeah, these are single family now, but you are on.
So.
Church Street.
If you go up across the Lake Charlotte there, like right there where you're, not Lake Charlotte, but where that lake, the, like that, right there.
Yeah, the water, yeah.
Like that middle parcel right there, um, it's gonna be coming, not there to the right, but the one right below the arrow, right there.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's the one where they spoke earlier today. Um, that they have it in, but they're saying they're being held up, they actually have gotten a permit for a back porch converted into free studio apartment, so they need to come before the board to get a conditional use because.
For multifamily.
They have some setbacks, they have.
Density.
Density. Parking, landscaping.
Parking. Four, three, three, late.
Right. And is their application in?
No.
They're, they didn't get their application in before the zoning in progress.
So again, this is sing- this is single family home, with, with conditional use is BMU.
Right. You can see that the structure behind the second house there, that right there has three apartments.
Yeah, seven, I thought it was nine, but seven.
So that would need to be, what, a BMU, conditional use?
Well, it depends, so right now, they did not apply for anything prior to the zoning in progress. It had actually been brought to their attention prior to that, and for whatever reason, they didn't submit any application, so when you guys, when they met with them, they said, you're gonna need X parking space, whatever, if the code gets adopted as stated, it'll be, so, and again, I think the ones in the back are one bedrooms, so they'll be um, one point five instead of one space per unit, I think, um, or I don't know, I can't remember what you know it's for, if it's for the one bedrooms was two or one space per. I think it's one point five, that'd be one point five, one point five, one point five, which would be four point five, and then the two bedrooms would be five more, so it'd be nine point five, so.
Mike, why would they have to come in front of the board, though, if they already have existing stuff with permit, without permits? Like, so, was it an interior?
Permit to build a port.
And then they went and converted. Gotcha.
Business mixed use, so it's, they have a way to get an after the fact permit in to remedy it, they have to get commission approval.
Right.
So it would be coming forward, but now, prior to it coming forward, staff will be saying to them, you need this much parking, and they're gonna need X number of shade trees, as I'm looking at it, I don't know if it's gonna meet the fifty percent pervious requirement, so they probably. So they probably won't. I don't, it looks pretty close, they might make it. But there's also, as you can see, the setback on the top right corner is not going to meet ten percent.
Right.
Yeah, a lot of the land was taken up with the wetland area with the lake area.
I don't think there's any wetland or lake there, I think it's a lot.
Some water.
I know, but there's a parcel.
Sorry, Stewart, Paul.
I mean, that's got to come in front of us for a variance.
That was gonna come in either way, no matter what.
Built without a permit. Is that really what you're gonna advocate for is?
Family.
The Wild West.
Cute little shop with a apartment apartment.
You need to get a permit.
Without a permit, right?
Yeah. So. So those would be my my sort of pointers, Mike and Jody.
I've added. Um, is there any other?
And I think that mostly incorporates the homes.
I I've been happy to email you these notes, you're going to find that they don't read. I'm like, I'm I'm kind of ad-libbing as I read my notes to you guys.
And it'll be formalized in our ninth agenda for this.
Yeah, it'll be, every single one of them will be itemized as a resolution so we can see exactly what it's gonna be.
We're keeping you busy, Lee.
And then we'll come back with board stuff.
Right, in January. Well, we have to do the CRB and the OP.
No, no.
I am, thank you.
Trying to move the process along. Okay, I have a question for Mike because I'm not as familiar with all the codes as everyone here. Number one, we we weren't addressing, I don't even know if they're in the code, are these Airbnb's?
State statute.
Oh, that state statute.
The state took that over.
Okay.
It's illegal for us to regulate because we would.
Right, but we could do some sort of code enforcement for, well, if they're, well, whatever, I'll send it in an email.
If somebody is Airbnb.
No, I meant code enforcement where like they're leaving garbage there for a week, yeah, that kind of, right, okay.
Because they do, some of them leave the cans out.
Those are the, yeah, that's the complaints I've gotten, it's like, you know, they have Airbnb, they don't pick up the garbage the next day, they leave it out for days.
But you should tell the neighbor, all they have to do is call.
Okay, I will.
And if they call and report it to code enforcement, someone will go out the next day.
Okay, of course, the owner's not there, that's the issue.
But the Airbnb people have left and the owner's not there. We'll put the cans back for them.
Okay, oh, well, okay. So my last is really just a comment, and I understand we have a three-minute rule. But to be perfectly honest, I would like people when they speak to be able to finish their sentence. We cut them off in mid-sentence or mid-thought and that's it, you're done, sit down. I just think it's it's almost rude, just let them finish their comment. Thank you.
I can tell you that we used to have a five-minute rule and the same thing happened. So what really happens is that it's ten minutes that people want to speak for. And so no matter how you do it, if you, obviously, when it's only two or three people at a public hearing, it's not a big deal to go on. When you have fifty people lined up to speak and it's a hundred and fifty minutes, a three minutes each. It becomes extensive to let it go to five minutes each because that jumps to two hundred and fifty minutes of public comment as opposed to a hundred and fifty. And you add another two hours to the meeting. But I agree with your concept that if there's only a few people there, we're a small little town, we all know each other.
And you're just finishing a sentence, usually we can all guess that the end of that sentence is coming and just let them finish their sentence and sit down.
I would ask you, Commissioner, to go back, Joby, clearly, that's not the case, that people are cut off. Generally, I I allow them to speak and finish.
Yes, you do, but to, it actually happened today, which is why.
Actually, and this was not during the public comment, I really should not have let them come up at all. And in that instance, I was anxious to have them complete their comments. The problem is when you start deviating, you know, you get into no man's land very quickly. So it's it's a balance we try to strike. And it's never perfect, and I appreciate your concerns for our ability to hear the public.
I've been at the other end of that and wanting to finish the sentence.
I have been at the other end of that myself. Any other comment? Uh, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, and thank you.